Good morning. We're calling this meeting of a Joint Council DDA Work Session to Order. We will not be calling roll. We do not have a quorum. We will however, be making note of those members of each board that are present today. I will be handing the microphone over to Annette Knowles, DDA Coordinator.
Close enough.
Close enough. And she'll be making introductions on the presentation.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for attending this morning. We are here today to preview two plans that we've had project teams working on for about the last year. Both of these projects were outgrowths of the downtown master plan. And so, we have been working with our project teams to take a deeper dive into looking at improvements on the Riverwalk and then our streetscapes, design standards throughout the downtown. So, just wanted to briefly acknowledge the committee members who contributed, whether they are present or not present. We wish to thank you very much for your time and effort in these projects. And so, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mark Russell of Russell Design, who is the landscape architect who facilitated most of this work. So, Mark, please.
Thank you, Annette. So, as Annette mentioned, we will be looking at two projects. First, we'll start off with the Riverwalk project. We'll pause a little bit for questions and then we'll proceed with the streetscape guidelines. And then again, question and answer, hopefully answers at the conclusion of that. So, if I don't mess this up entirely. So, this is the Riverwalk. And the way we approached the Riverwalk was to try to compartmentalize it into zones. Rather than looking, well, comprehensively, we want to look at the entire riverfront, but initially, we want to look at it in zones to try to help us understand in pieces what we need to do to make the plan whole and comprehensive throughout the entire Riverwalk. So, Zone 1 initially is between where the gazebo is and McComb Street. And some of those things, there really provides the best opportunities for visual and physical access to the Riverwalk. And that is really reinforced where the heart of, does this have a pointer?
Yeah.
Okay. Where the Heart of Monroe Study is, you see the big dot on the left side of the slide. That's the Heart of Monroe Study. And that is basically blending the alleyway and connection to the riverfront. The large purple area you see there is a contemplated riverfront park. That was introduced in the downtown master plan, which would be complementary to residential district in that area, or development in that area. At least, that's what's identified in the master plan. The area, the asterisks that you see really are areas that we have access currently. And accessible access, for the most part, excuse me. But, one area that is a little bit difficult to see, or to provide physical access to is Altrusa Park. And that's essentially in the center of Zone 1. And the problem there is grade. We've got about a 14-foot grade change between Front Street and the Riverwalk itself. We'll talk a little bit further about that as we go forward. The existing businesses in this area really don't lend themselves to a wonderful opportunity to activate the riverfront. Many have not. So, we would like to look at that further into this presentation as well. Zone 2 in the center of the slide, basically, is McComb Street over to the entrance to the river, current entrance to the Riverwalk, and essentially, at the western edge of the Soldiers and Sailors Park. This area is really difficult. There's a lot of obstacles, topography, grade change walls, things of that nature. We would want to try to partner with businesses to promote access to the riverfront where feasible and economically feasible. Some of that would possibly require acquisition, potentially even easements, which, you know, can prove to be difficult, difficult to obtain. The third, Zone 3 is Soldiers and Sailors Park. Really, this part of this study was to continue the Riverwalk through Soldiers and Sailors to the water plant on the west, on the eastern edge of the property. And in doing that, there were some issues that we had talked about in some of our walkthroughs, that being the geese, you know, infants intrusion, we'll say, and how we handle that. And I'll show you some in the slides later, how we propose to do that. But essentially, extending the Riverwalk through Soldiers and Sailors, trying to reinforce connectivity to neighborhoods, and then also to the Riverwalk itself. So, what we did then is we just came up with lists of opportunities and really constraints and what we can do to improve the access along, to and along the Riverwalk. But, some things need to be addressed. And we've talked with the committee members, also talked with Patrick Lewis and the Engineering Department about some things that we should address and could address in incremental fashions. And that being safety and maintenance as one part. You know, we have some surfaces that are uneven. We have some settlement that needs, that need to be addressed. We have areas where we have little light, little to no light, that we want to try to incorporate within the plan. And then also, providing landscape, maybe cameras that are connected to the city infrastructure, things like that, to try to make it more friendly, more usable, safe, and function as this cohesive thread through the downtown area. I mentioned a little bit too, about enhancing the connections. And some of those areas are easier, particularly in Zone 1, if you recall. Zone 3 is, Zone 2 is a little bit more difficult. Zone 3, there's already one there at Soldiers and Sailors Park. So, we can utilize that. It's accessible. And we just want to celebrate that a little bit better, and then provide the connectivity also through the east, the eastern portion of our study area, in and through Soldiers and Sailors Park. The pedestrian amenities, you'll see some of that a little bit later, probably a little bit easier to understand. We've talked about mile markers. We've talked about Wi-Fi connections, signage, wayfinding, how we can cross-market this Riverwalk, or people using the Riverwalk into the downtown area, so that it becomes a little bit easier for people to see their destination either on a wayfinding sign, and then actually physically get to it. And get to it not only from an accessible standpoint, like we have at McComb Street Bridge with the ramp systems, but then also, maybe there's opportunities for some vertical circulation, which we'll speak to in a little bit. Continuing on with some of these improvements and analysis issue concepts, if you will, are basically trying to celebrate the river a little bit better, maybe providing some accessible fishing docks. We do have a lot of people that fish off of the current Riverwalk, but maybe there's a little eddies along there where we could potentially get those folks essentially off those paths, if you will, into an area that's a little bit more isolated and celebrated a little bit better for accessibility and fishing and what have you. We talked about restrooms along the path, and really don't really know how that happens yet. Certainly at Soldiers and Sailors, where the pavilion is, there's an opportunity there to change that to a facility that have restrooms. Certainly, you know, the areas, if you see in the slide up in the upper left, you know, wonderful opportunities for dining and what have you, and, you know, experiences along that Riverwalk, engaging those businesses along the Riverwalk. But, we really have to be careful, you know, in understanding their policies, city policies, whether or not we, you know, use their facilities, or how we use their facilities. So, that really kind of speaks to the next point of enhancing the adjacent buildings. Some of the things that we need to do along, or at least, maybe it's a policy, maybe it's something that we have to do within the city, addressing some of the unsafe natures of some of those buildings, broken windows, water, broken downspouts, water, you know, basically flowing right onto the Riverwalk could be issues with safety and accessibility. And then also some wires and things that are, some are maybe, maybe they're all abandoned. I don't know. We haven't certainly investigated that, but there's certainly some opportunities where we can kind of clean up those facades a little bit. And that's the whole idea of this, is making it friendly, welcoming, safe, and aesthetically pleasing. And for the most part, it is. But, there are some areas certainly as we want to improve, some of the areas that we want to improve are pretty evident. Wayfinding and signage, I touched on a little bit earlier. And I think the most important thing here is cross-marketing opportunities and connectivity to the business structure and the urban fabric in downtown. And ordinance and policy review, I talked a little bit about that as well. So, in the conceptual master plan, again, very conceptual, but moving again from left to right like we did in Zone 1, talking about opportunities there. Certainly, the purple future, potential future riverfront park remains. Where the Heart of Monroe access or alley study crosses Front Street, there's an opportunity here to do what we've done near Altrusa Park, where we have the banner, if you will, of signage that attaches to the, both sides of the bill, or buildings on either side of the walkway. This happens to be, I don't know what it's called currently, but it used to be the U.N.I. Bar. And then this is just, again, just a celebration of a connection to the Riverwalk and providing those real comfortable access points for the, for the community pedestrians and visitors. These might be opportunities for some of the DIA lending art programs, where we want to put art up. We could put wayfinding signs up. We could put a number of different things that allow people to not only circulate to the river, but horizontally or parallel to Front Street and cater to the businesses there as well. Moving further to the west, pardon me, to the east, there is a current access, as I mentioned before, to the west of Altrusa Park. Really cool opportunity here. I think what we can do is create a handicap lift there, or a lift there, so that we can provide access to the riverfront. Currently, it's steps. And so, we'd like to see if we can't improve that. And I think there's a really neat opportunity there. So, if we can't achieve the circulation that we want from Altrusa Park, there's another way to accomplish that. The slide you see, or not the slide, the image, I can't really point to it, but Altrusa Park is the larger of the, sort of a rectangular shape. Oh, that's nice. Where was that? Where'd that come from?
The east.
Oh, that's you. It's that dot, it's that, that big dot right there. Yeah. That's great. Thank you. And so, that's something that, that's Altrusa Park. And a couple of different ways, if you go kitty-corner and down to the left, or diagonally and down to the right, excuse me, my right, you see sort of an entrance of Altrusa Park. Currently, a couple of benches and some grass and some areas that are there. We think it's a neat opportunity. Maybe you bring in some vendors. It could even be, you know, restaurants, things of that nature. You know, we've even talked about the potential of having outdoor dining there. Could, as I said, it could be a restaurant. And then, and then down below at the, at the Riverwalk area itself, that's an area where we could, we could create, we'll call it a little innie, okay, a little innie park, where you can walk into Altrusa Park, where currently you can't because of the hillside there. And then also, there's a small stage at the bottom, which people can, you know, people that are physically able can use it. People that are, have accessible disabilities are not able to use that comfortably. So, maybe the stage moves down toward the riverfront, and we can create that opportunity for everybody. The area, we'll get into this a little bit further, but the areas along the riverfront at 129, the 129 Lounge, the martini bar there, neat opportunities there. We talked a little bit about maybe enhancing that storefront there in the riverfront side of that. Further down across, or to the west, sorry, east of the McComb Street Bridge, we think there's a neat, there's neat opportunities to really celebrate the accessible points along the Riverwalk. And we can do that in pavement treatments. We can do that with landscaping. We can do that also with signage. Wayfinding signage, you could even provide a sign on the bridge that says, "This is McComb Street," so people know where they are. And then also, where we have access up to the business areas, or businesses, there are opportunities for wayfinding. And again, that cross-marketing I spoke of earlier. Further down to the entrance to Soldiers and Sailors, or pardon me, to the entrance, well, I guess it is, Soldiers and Sailors Park, and also to the riverfront, Riverwalk, that asterisk right there, where the cursor is. What we'd like to do there, it's, the entrance is sort of recessed into the site. We'd like to bring that entrance out to the street. So, it really celebrates the entrance to that. And it's identifiable as a wayfinding opportunity, a landmark, if you will, to bring that closer to Front Street. We think that's a pretty cool opportunity that I think we should go forward with. And then further down, a lot worthy, and Patrick, you might be able to help me, but where we have all these manholes for the sewer, right? Is it the sewer along the river? Where we have all these manholes, let's celebrate those a little bit, make it accessible. But, why not, why not have an overlook there, or a fishing dock there, so that we're not looking at this, Patrick might like to look at it. But, most people don't want to need, don't want to look at the utility, so we can create an opportunity of decking and what have you there, and a fishing dock. So, as a typical amenity plan, if you will, this is just anywhere along the Riverwalk, about a typical 100 feet or so. What we want to do, I'll just talk about it linearly a little bit, and then go into some of the details. And certainly, these can be tested over time. One of the things that we want to do is try to modify the paving surface, maybe in some areas where we need to improve it, or make it safer, create, or repair some of the areas. But, you know, we can do that with paving. We can do it with texture. We can do it with color. Talk with Patrick a little bit, and it's possible to do that. And looking at the details of the way that that boardwalk or Riverwalk was constructed, we can do this. And I think it's something that could be unique along the Riverwalk, that could provide these stopping points, points of interest along the Riverwalk, where we might have interpretive signage, which I'll talk to in a little bit, seating areas. And all of our seating areas want to have what's called companion seating. So, if somebody has a stroller, or if somebody is wheelchair-bound, there's an opportunity for them to sit next to their loved one, or caretaker, adjacent to their bench. And that's, I think, pretty important, at least for me, important to incorporate in this park, and any park, or any space, really. So, moving again from left to right, the bench that we've selected along there is something a little bit whimsical. It's got a kind of a reed shape to it, or texture to it, detail to it. A lot of the colors of this will be, will be gray, or black, or something pretty monotone, so that it kind of blends in. The slide to the right of that is a sort of a typical section, or pardon me, a concept development of what we want to do for the handrail along the Riverwalk. I know we have some issues with ice and what have you in the wintertime. We talked a little bit about that, and how we might be able to construct that. Maybe they're movable, or detachable panels. So, when it's high-use season, we can, we can create more safety there and amenity. And then in the wintertime and early spring, we can take those panels right off and allow for the mother nature to take its course. The reed-like trash receptacle next to that is similar to what I was mentioning with the bench. Pavement treatments, you know, it could be anything, as I said. This particular one on the right looks at exposed aggregate, and then also with some concrete banding, that might provide, again, that amenity and that texture relief and color along the Riverwalk itself. Fishing docks, fishing opportunities in the lower left, you know, we can articulate that handrail so that we have an accessible rail along there, if people elect to fish along the Riverwalk itself, rather than the, some of the overlooks that we would have at River, at the Soldiers and Sailors Park. The next two slides are wayfinding. You know, that could be working with your sign company that you have here in town currently, and creating that design and that information on there. Thank you. I do need that. And then, the next, the next slide there is what's called a sound post. And that's, that's really catering to accessibility. And it's a push-button, a loop-tape system. Anybody can use it. It's, it has some interpretive message on it that also is audibly presented, so that with hearing impairments and what have you, people, people can really start to use that and function that particular element along the entire length of the Riverwalk. And it can be historic references. It could be natural system references, much like what you guys have currently with the signs where the fish are and what have you. So, it has a bunch of different opportunities. And then lighting, nautical-themed lighting. Don't really know that the particular color is blue. I don't know what color they are, but maybe, again, they're, they're sort of that dark gray and that black color, sort of a monotone. So, I don't, I don't want to go into much detail on these, but, because these were just really quick concepts for Altrusa Park. Both really addressing Front Street, and then also addressing the Riverwalk itself, and trying to create an opportunity for a little place to rest along the Riverwalk, or maybe it's an entertainment spot, as I spoke to earlier. So, the, the slides on the right, again, we've talked a little bit about that before. But, one, addressing the Front Street, and trying to create some welcoming environment internally to the park, so people can use it, take advantage of the grade change that we have, and then using some of these, you know, restaurant opportunities and what have you. We don't really know what those are, but, you know, they could be, it could be cyclical during the seasons. And then down below, at the Riverwalk, again, you've got an opportunity for, you know, maybe it's a gathering area, maybe there's a small venue, or something going on there, concert, what have you. So, in Zone 2, McComb Street Bridge is on the top. Basically, you have a before and an after. The after, again, is landscaping shade, which we need desperately along that Riverwalk, lighting, interpretive signage. We'll have some, you know, maybe it's some safety, lighting, phones, what have you, cameras, things of that nature, to provide that sense of security along the Riverwalk. The slide on the bottom, again, is the current access, the one on the left, the current access adjacent to and west of Altrusa Park, from Front Street, down a couple of stairs. And then, as I spoke to earlier, an opportunity provides some vertical circulation with perhaps a lift of some sort. Zone 1, this is the 129 Lounge behind there, you know, a really neat opportunity, sort of a forgotten area. But, many of the buildings along the Riverwalk are sort of turning their backs, or have turned their backs to the Riverwalk and the river itself. But, really, you know, some neat opportunities to celebrate that, and really enhance that, and make it more lively and active along the Riverwalk, which I think really starts to not only provide those cross-marketing opportunities I spoke of earlier, but also just to activate the Riverwalk. It could even be festival space, you know, if the city wants to, is fortunate enough, say, to acquire some open space that's there, or subdivide a piece of property with a current property owner, maybe there's an opportunity for some festival space, some art shows, things of that nature. The slide on the bottom, again, the former, what, does that former U.N.I. Bar have a name now? But, nobody knows, okay.
The former.
Not yet, okay. So, so.
Former the Us Bar.
It's what?
The former the Us.
Yeah, that's right. So, that, that is, again, sort of the terminus, if you will, of the, of the Heart of Monroe Study, the alley enhancement study, but then a celebration of not only that alleyway, but its connection to the Riverwalk itself. Soldiers and Sailors Park, reinforcing the connectivity to and from the existing park entrance, Riverwalk entrance, I should say. Moving the Riverwalk entrance forward, the slide on the bottom left, and then a meandering walk system through the park, with opportunities for fishing docks, overlooks. In the extreme right of the conceptual plan above, perhaps there's an outdoor classroom, or maybe it's a small little venue for lunchtime, you know, music, jazz, what have you, story reading, things of that nature. The War Memorial, which is in the center of the park, you know, wonderful opportunity there to really celebrate that and connect it to the park. Currently, it seems like the plantings sort of turn its back on the park. And I think we really want to try to engage that use and that very important celebration into the park as well. The dark green represents maybe some native plantings. We call them vegetative buffers. Could act as a filtering mechanism for the pesticides and what have you, used to care for the lawn, but then also is a deterrent for the geese. They don't really like, they, they like to walk up grass, but they, they're not going to walk through something where it might be, you know, have predators and what have you in there. So, they're a little uncomfortable there. So, I'm going to let you ponder that for a little bit while I take a drink, and then we can answer any questions. Or if you want to see any other slide, any of the slides, again, I'm happy to show you.
I was a couple of slides back where it shows, maybe a few more back. Wait, I think that, wait a minute. This was it. So, now, it looks like that banding of that, I think you called it the exposed aggregate.
This is decorative paving.
Whichever would be kind of featured in there.
Sure.
It looks like it's almost highlighting wherever these, where there's a bench, where there's, and I don't know if that was on purpose, or if that's meant to kind of identify maybe from a distance where the next, if you can't tell, the bench, or wayfinding station, or garbage can, or.
That was purposeful. And I don't know what the rhythm of those would be. But, you know, I.
There is a.
And it may not be. You know, I think we want benches incrementally, you know, for, along the way, every, however long that, you know, yeah, as, as we develop this plan in more detail, we'll be able to identify that.
I like that. I wasn't sure if that was meant, or if it was just a happy exit, but I think it can come across well in the overall design as executed.
Right. Thank you. Yes.
With the handrail, is it meant to go the whole length of the Riverwalk? And why I ask, is we just did the duckie dash, so we have to get into the river?
Yep.
And so, that will make it.
These will be removable?
Definitely.
Yeah. We don't know what that detail looks like, but just think of it as a, almost a hook and a bolt, or an eye bolt, right? So, you can hook it on there and attach it at the bottom, so it's safe. Nobody's going to fall off of there, and, or get into the river unless they, you know, they have a purpose. And so, they could, they'll be easily removed. We don't know exactly what they look like, how it's done, and where they're stored. We don't know exactly what they look like, how it's done and where they're stored, once they're not in use, but the notion there is, yes, along the entire riverwalk, that you would have this railing system that would provide the safety. Yeah, hi.
Does any of this space need to be winterized?
Any...
Would there be winterization required?
That's an operational and policy element. You know, again, we talk, one of the things that I think we need to address along the riverwalk are bikes, rollerblades, things of that nature. Do we allow them or don't we? Currently, we don't. But do we see them? Yes. And so how do we blend those users? Because I think we want to reinforce that mode of transportation as an alternate. Certainly, you're not going to drive a car down here, but you know, to get from one end of town to another or the city to another, it's a pretty cool opportunity to bike along the riverwalk than it would be to, you know, find your way through traffic and what have you. But winterization, currently, there's, it's minimal, if any.
We do close it though.
Yes.
Because of the risk of ice and that would be the same thing with the railings.
Yeah.
Those would have to come out as part of that winterization. So yeah, there would be concerns.
I would love for the policy to say, you know, some of the areas are winterized and used. The dynamics of the river in the wintertime and the spring are, is really cool and I think as an education, our opportunity is well missed. But I do think, you know, from a policy standpoint and safety and what have you, all of those have to be addressed. You know, de-icing and how we do that.
That's a big challenge.
Yeah.
Because you don't have a buffer between the, you have to salt excessively on the riverwalk because of the shadow of the buildings.
Right.
You do tend to have a lot of thawing, refreezing, thawing, refreezing.
That's right.
And that's why I think generally we've closed it for the most part in the winter because we don't have a comprehensive winter maintenance plan.
That's right, that's right. Now certainly, you know, we've all seen or maybe not, but you know, the snowmelt systems, I mean, they're expensive, you know, granted, they're very expensive. But shoot, if you have some buildings that are businesses that really open their doors and are welcoming to the riverwalk, it might be a neat opportunity for, maybe there's a partnership, you know, funding and what have you along that to allow people to access the riverwalk during the wintertime, you know, so they can, you know, or even, you know, early springtime, if you will, they could have the heaters out there and what have you, just to try to promote a little bit better use of the riverwalk itself. Any other questions? Okay. So we'll proceed to the Streetscape guidelines. Again, this is a very shortened version of both reports and that has a full copy that will be published on the website. And I think it's a, there are some things that certainly the involvement of the committees and the analysis and the depth of the analysis and what have you will be represented on the website in the full comprehensive study, particularly as we get into the, to the Streetscape. Now, quickly, the Streetscape had a committee. We had a walkthrough early in the project, sort of a issues and opportunities walk, which was really informative. And then we had a couple of focus groups. We had some public participation or I guess that was one of our focus groups we had. Didn't have a heck of a lot of people showing up. So we published it online and got wonderful response, 620-something responses online, which was fabulous. And that also, that study is in the full document, which is 160 pages or something. But you can see that in a sort of a pie chart of the likes and dislikes. We didn't get into a lot of detail, do you like this or not like this? Basically, kind of a first hit, first impression of the guideline elements. So the analysis, again, starting out with this project, we tried to break it into pieces. We used the downtown master plan as a model because what the downtown master plan has done is what you see in the legend, has they, excuse me, broken the city down into districts, which I think is a great way to look at each of these spaces. Now, from a Streetscape standpoint, you can look at these districts independently, but I think comprehensively, we have to look at it throughout the entire city so that it's cohesive. Not that you can't change some things, and I'll show you that in a little bit, but we want to certainly focus on the connectivity of not only pedestrian travel, but also of unique and opportunistic points of creating pedestrian amenities. So the civic district is the blue dot in the middle or square in the middle. The white represents the buildings that we're in or one of the buildings that we're in on the corner and bounded by Front Street, sorry, no, First Street and Third Street and Washington and Monroe. No, not Washington, that's, no, McComan, McComan Monroe, sorry. And it's basically the area where, you know, all the civic uses are and the square and what have you, which is represented by the dotted line or the dotted circle in the center. Yeah. And the creative district is the green area to the left and that area is identified from the River Raisin south to Third Street. That really has a lot of civic or cultural uses. That's where the library, or excuse me, not the library, the museum is and the theater and what have you. Some of the areas, if you go to the commercial core, the next one, that's identified between McCom and Monroe from the River Raisin down to First Street. However, it also jumps across Monroe Street in the master plan and in our study, we're saying that Monroe Street is such a barrier that although architecturally, there's some connection, but physically, I think it's separated. And certainly, the uniqueness of the creative district and the scale of the creative district and the streets, certainly Front Street and even First Street are just wonderful. They have a great scale to them and the streets are narrower and it just is, to me, is a really special place that I think can really be celebrated and unique, as a unique opportunity for pedestrians and visitors. The market district up at the top, again, between the businesses of Monroe and South Willow Street within the neighborhood, the Elm, what is it, Elm and, I can't remember the Elm District, Historic District? Yeah. Well, it's, I think it's Elm and McCom Historic District, I think is what it is. Anyway, that's where the current farmer's market is, again, the white dot in that ochre or that sort of orange color. Riverfront District is the light green in the center, basically from Elm all the way to the backs of the businesses, if you will, along the riverwalk to the south. Transition zones in purple, these are areas where you will find varying scales, densities of residential as well as some commercial filtered into those areas too, that I think become the transition zones into the downtown and certainly can create those transition zones into the neighborhoods as well. The downtown, our primary downtown gateways identified in the master plan, again, just reinforced here. The study contemplates changing those a couple of, in a couple of areas. One on Scott Street at first, changing that and the progression from McCom heading north, heading, sorry, Monroe heading north. Where really does that transition of use occur? The master plan contemplates Third Street or Fifth Street. You know, we're thinking it's maybe even Seventh or Sixth Street might be a better place to make that happen because the transition of uses change in those areas and the scale and celebration of some of those, some of those gateways, which we don't know in detail really what that looks like, but certainly areas at Seventh and Sixth Street give a better, provide a better opportunity for development of a gateway, whatever that gateway should become. And much like before, we talked about acquisition and easements, we may be, we may also have to address those with the gateway developments. The primary focus of the Streetscape guideline study was the public realm. The public realm is essentially identified as the area between the back of the curb and the building storefronts. The slide in the, or the photograph in the upper right-hand corner separates that public realm into three zones. One, the amenity zone adjacent to the curb, the pedestrian zone in blue, and then the storefront zone in that ochre color, orange color. The amenity zone, again, is an area where we, that's what we have. We have public amenities there. That's where you'll see seating. That's where you'll see some street trees, much like you see the slide in the, either slide on the left, but you know, particularly the slide on the bottom left where you have planting opportunities there. This is where you're going to see some signage. This is where you'll see seating for benches, garbage cans, what have you will be located in these areas as well. The existing lighting along the amenity or in the amenity zone will be, we're proposing they be, the color of them be changed to either black or dark gray. Furniture would complement that and then we would certainly adjust, massage the planting areas to occur where these streetlights are or are not. Oh, I'm going to go back to this slide. The pedestrian zone is basically a thoroughfare. It's approximately six to eight feet wide. A lot of these public, a lot of these streets, or actually in this public realm zone, if you will, the entire zone, varies from probably eight, well, even narrower on Washington Street, but for the most part in the civic area, civic core or commercial core in the civic zone districts, those are approximately eight, nine to 16 feet wide along McCom Street and, or sorry, on Long Monroe Street. So they're very wide, but what we'd like to maintain in the pedestrian zone is approximately a six to an eight-foot wide area, maybe even wider in some of these, certainly along Monroe Street, excuse me. And this is an area that is free of obstacles, right? We don't have signage in there, we just have pedestrian travel. The storefront zones are the areas where you would see, like at the martini bar, you would see outdoor dining, okay, seating opportunities that we would still keep the pedestrian travel open, but have the storefronts, that storefront zone would be the areas where you'd see the dining, the signage, the A-frame signage, what have you. These are some of the things that we've looked at in the master plan and sort of did a little analysis on parking lots. Now, parking can be certainly behind buildings, but in some of the areas where we have parking along the Streetscape, if you will, it sort of fragments a Streetscape. So we want to take a look at opportunities. Maybe these are opportunities in the bottom slide. This is actually in Monroe where we have, we have parking adjacent to a public street or the Streetscape. You know, maybe it's an opportunity for an infill housing, maybe there's some parking behind the building, but we want to create and maintain that pedestrian experience throughout the thread, if you will, of the Streetscape versus breaking it up by the use of parking lot areas. Outdoor dining, we talked a little bit about that before. Opportunities for dining out in the storefront areas. You could even, in the third slide from the top, there is opportunities for platform dining. That's a policy-driven element where the city's going to have to decide the season, the city's going to have to decide the use and the locations, but opportunities for people to have outdoor dining, you know, sort of out of the amenity zone, out of the pedestrian zone, but in the parking zone. So you're going to sacrifice a little bit of parking, parallel parking along the street, but certainly afford an opportunity for outdoor dining and opportunity for the business to grow out into the street during the high season. And a couple of other slides that represent the same thing. The one, the second from the top, I think is an opportunity, maybe this is an Altrusa Park concept, you know, where you have this wonderful experience along the river, or excuse me, along the walkway and Front Street, but then you have this opportunity that wants to bring you and welcome you internally into the site. Street vendors, I mean, an opportunity for the farmer's market to come into town so they're not just doing a Tuesday, Saturday thing, but it's an opportunity also for other street vendors, flowers on the corner, you know, the kiosk that's on Washington Street, maybe that becomes a vendor of some sort. You know, I could see that almost as a Parisian sort of atmosphere where you've got flowers and you've got, you know, music and what have you along there that really starts to enliven the street a little bit and provide color and amenity and opportunities. And certainly, we'd have to talk about where this all happens, you know, what street it happens on, does it, do we close streets? Do we try to keep pedestrian travel there, vehicular travel there? A lot of different opportunities. Certainly can do it, you know, in the civic district around here. There's a lot of open space around here that we could, we could do it on or some other smaller streets that aren't that heavily traveled. Site furnitures, another opportunity, charging stations. I mean, you know, get a little bit more, you know, a little closer to the time and a little bit ahead of the game, but charging stations could happen even along the riverwalk, but could happen throughout the town. You know, the Wi-Fi, we talked a little bit about, is there Wi-Fi downtown? Is there Wi-Fi along the riverwalk? So there's opportunities for people to, you know, to stay connected, if you will. I mean, everybody's got to have their phone and their charger with them, so, you know, not me, but many do. Ash, receptacles, ash urns, you know, we, there's mandated by state, you know, a lot of things, can't have smoking and you have to be so far away from the storefronts, the door entrances to businesses, but they're there and we have to, we have to respond to those. And they would, these would happen in the amenity zone along with the trash receptacles and the benches and what have you. Drinking fountains, you know, both of these were well-received in the survey that we took. One, obviously, a little bit more historic, the other, you know, water bottle filling station so everybody can fill their plastic water bottles and, you know, we got dog bowls and things like that that are pretty well-rounded and supportive of family and furry friends. The typical amenity plan, again, just a hypothetical section through here. You know, walking right across the top of the slides, you've got planters in that storefront zone. We're not saying that all the businesses have to have the same planter. I think we like the opportunity for diversity. We like the opportunity for textural change and provide a little bit more individualization of businesses. So, but if we do want to have, you know, if we want to replace some of the planters that we have on the street corners, maybe we can do it with something a little bit more contemporary. You know, we don't necessarily want to, you know, this goes back to the Secretary of the, is it the Secretary of Interior? Yeah, from a historic standpoint, you know, we don't have to match historic detailing to celebrate history and to celebrate the historic architecture. You know, some of the things that can complement it, you know, even if it's, even if it's more of a modern look, and then it really starts to celebrate the historic nature of the architecture. Exposed aggregate and concrete banding, we'll talk a little bit about that, but things about, you know, that, we want to make it simple. You know, we want it, we want it to be not necessarily historic, but you know, do we want to put brick pavers down like we have in some areas? Perhaps. The detailing becomes very important, how we do that. The maintenance becomes very important, how we do that. And if we start, have to get into something and start breaking it all apart to access utilities or change things, then it just becomes cumbersome and maybe a little unsightly. We want this to be timeless in its, in its design, but we have to be respectful of its care and maintenance going forward. We sit, we talk about these paving in the master plan being exposed aggregate or concrete banding. The survey, people really liked, you know, some of the paving, decorative concrete pavers or clay pavers. I think clay pavers are a little bit more historic, if you will, if we're going to go to... If we're gonna go to clay, I know Patrick has used clay pavers in some of the intersections in downtown. And I think it provides a nice color and textural difference and sort of highlighting those special areas. Trash cans, you know, we want to have something that, we work with Loretta a little bit in trying to come up with a plan for Riverwalk furnitures, park furniture, and how can we use that in the downtown so that we have some continuity, as I spoke of earlier, but it has also some special qualities to it, much if we wanted to talk about the creative district or something, maybe that has a special feature to it. I can talk about that in a second. Bike racks throughout the downtown, so we're not, you know, tying bikes up on lamp posts or guardrails or, you know, planters, what have you. Historic or interpretive signage, wayfinding signage. You know, this is a shot from Ann Arbor. If you guys have been to Ann Arbor, you're basically looking at a building that is transformed over and transformed in time from something historic to what you're looking at presently. So there's some neat opportunities for really celebrating the past and the historic qualities of Monroe. The slide in the bottom is exactly what's here currently, is streetlights and how do we, do we paint those black or dark gray? But we'd like to keep those very much in the same place. I'm not crazy about the banner arms that we have in town or the across-the-road banners. I think they have a pretty neat effect and certainly in celebrating those. But, you know, I don't know. I don't know. I guess I'm kind of torn on whether or not we want those and where they're actually located, I guess, is maybe something that's a little bit more important to me than in the center of a street or the walkway. Talked about parking meters and parking kiosks and smart meters and things of that nature. We have corn-operated meters currently. Do we use credit cards? Do we use parking kiosks to try to clean up the Streetscape? And we're not saying get rid of the parking meter and get rid of that inventory or that revenue, but we're just saying, is there a better way to do it? That cleans up the street a little bit and, but still caters to not only the city, but the patrons. And where those are located, I think they're gonna be located in that amenity zone. We're showing it on the street side of the amenity zone. It could possibly be on the pedestrian zone side of that as well. Benches, we're suggesting metal or metal and epay or metal and composite materials. That, we're using metal and composite materials at Labor Park and some other parks in town, but maybe there's an opportunity, say in this area here, the civic area, where you have metal benches and then in the creative district, maybe you have wood and metal. A little bit warmer, the scale, I think, would complement this type of bench and those materials. The section in the lower right is just a typical section, you know, maybe along the Streetscape, we have charging stations, you know, for electric vehicles. And how do we address those going forward? Are those all focused and concentrated in parking lots? Or are there opportunities for this along the street? Certainly, you know, in some of the studies that have been done previously along McCombs, along Monroe Street, we have to, we have to address pedestrian safety. We have to address the scale of that street. And one way to do that and slow traffic down is incorporating parallel parking. You know, we have parallel parking on the east side of Monroe, but not on the west side. So there's some opportunities to speak with, you know, Patrick, his team, and also with Pendant signing or banner siding along the street. Many of the storefronts have signage along their onnings, which in my opinion cater to a car travel or a pedestrian across the street. But, you know, if you're walking from a wayfinding standpoint, if there's nothing that tells you where you are, either as a sign, wayfinding sign, we'll have that, you know, opportunities, placement for those. But is there an opportunity to provide, much like what Les was talking about, this rhythm of these bands and these rhythm of these light, of these signs, you know, act as that destination or that opportunity, those, and those, that connection to the businesses and the cross-marketing opportunities along that Streetscape? So, Front Street, this is sort of at the terminus of Washington, just again, just a sketch concept. But the, you know, the transformation from the slide before to after, you can see the amenity zone highlighted on the left of the slide, the pedestrian zone and the storefront zone, they blend together, I think, with materials. And the same materials are throughout the entire Streetscape. But, you know, what we're not showing in this slide is, you know, outdoor dining and those opportunities. But again, as I mentioned before, it's important to try to maintain a minimum of six feet, six feet and preferably eight feet of pedestrian travel way adjacent to the amenity zone and the storefront zone. You can see in this slide, you know, the trees, many merchants are nervous about trees and challenge us as designers with trees. Trees, trees provide the shade that we need. We have to pick the species that are correct for allowing views to signage and views to storefront. The rhythm of the trees is not, is not every 30 feet, is not every 40 feet. It could be, you know, they could be 60 feet apart, they could be clustered, a number of different ways, but we have to be respectful and mindful of the businesses along there and so we're not blocking certainly their storefront and their visual connection to the doors themselves. Signage, obviously, you know, people are gonna do what they need to do from a business standpoint. You can see the onnings on the slides, either slide. But, you know, we would want to also introduce the pendant signing, as I spoke of earlier. The planting areas adjacent to the, or in the amenity zone will all be elevated with a small concrete curb or whatever material curb, but we're suggesting concrete in this image to separate it from salt. We don't have mulch oozing out into the sidewalk, but we have an opportunity there, keeps things clean. It allows for maintenance to occur, snow removal, if you will, along these areas to have something to bang against, if you will, rather than banging against a plant, you're banging against a concrete curb. This is a Streetscape concept of, you know, it's anywhere USA, doesn't necessarily have to be Monroe, but we're thinking that, and again, going back to my comment earlier about celebrating historic architecture, maybe there's opportunities for infill housing, sorry, infilled building, much like I talked about at the area where the fragmentation of the Streetscape by parking, and that's really on First Street in Monroe, is where that parking lot is. But maybe there's an opportunity to do something like this, still have the same Streetscape elements that we've presented earlier, but maybe there's a piece of architecture that is more simplified and maybe a little bit more, we'll say, contemporary, modern, but certainly materials could be the same or similar, but the detailing is a little bit different than what you would see in the downtown presently. But again, I think it's an opportunity to celebrate that architecture and really present something or have, you know, a developer present something that a little, is a little bit more in keeping, you know, with the times, if you will. It gives a little pulse, I think, to the downtown area that it's progressing. And I think that's what the Streetscape really wants to try to represent is a progression, not only for the businesses, but also providing those amenities for pedestrians so that the pedestrians can visit the businesses and maybe not just one destination, but travel along to many destinations along the Streetscape. That should do it. Any questions? Yes?
Do you look at Front Street if it came to ways higher than public now?
First Street?
Specifically in terms of what would be left by the businesses?
I don't know exactly. I don't think there's been that actual, I don't know if we have an actual drawing of what that road bed looks like and how much is left over, but like we were talking about Washington Street, Washington Street has a very narrow sidewalk. And what we would like to do is maybe in a smaller version, do the same thing here. I don't know exactly how, what that means, Lucy, from a standpoint of the width and the breadth of the amenity zone and the other things, but I think we would like to maintain some harmony and some consistency in what we have here. I'm not a big fan of street grates or tree grates. They just, trees don't seem to do well in that environment. You know, there's all kinds of different things that we've talked about in the master plan or in the guidelines, using structural soil. Now, structural soil is a proprietary product from Cornell University, and it gives you an opportunity to put paving over the top of it. It's compactable, but it allows for the penetration of roots below the surface, so you don't get heaving sidewalks and what have you. I think that's something that we would want to do in the downtown, particularly in areas where it gets a little bit smaller and more, a little bit more challenging. I don't know if I answered your question, you know?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. No? Les?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. Are you done? I am. Just, I guess you're calling this any town USA. This is exactly what would, I think, fit right in at the corner of First and Monroe Street, where we have a parking lot currently. One of the highlights and defining characteristics of a dense, sustainable downtown is that you have density and that you have infill and you don't have large swaps of property that are open or anything in terms of parking or parks or whatever. You just don't have too much of an imbalance. And so when you have something that would occupy that space, whether it's residential, commercial, or a combination of parking and all the other, all three, then you would have something that's a little bit more of pointing toward a mixed-use district. And it's also more appealing for developers that may be looking at Monroe but don't see a lot of these downtown spaces as kind of the prefinished white boxes or having the utilities that they need for their business as they're trying to locate downtown. So something like a new development, like you said, making sure materials are cohesive with the existing infrastructure and making sure that that has a context. I think in downtown, we don't want some kind of crazy steel sculpture building there, but at the same time, something that's going to provide that tax base, provide incentive for other businesses. And to carry that Streetscape, maybe we need to break up that parking lot, sidewalk kind of combination a little bit more throughout. And I think this just highlights that nicely. So this is actually very relevant to maybe that site.
I think so. I think so, just the same. I know the master plan contemplates some infill housing or infill building, and certainly there's some areas along Front Street in that creative district, so between McComb, or sorry, Monroe and sort of the Harrison, Third Street kind of intersection, where they're also contemplating a roundabout. I didn't speak to roundabouts, maybe I can if anybody has any questions. But one, that particular area to me, when we do infill housing or infill building, we need to be careful because some of the areas that they've identified as potential infill developments, I think, cut off that connectivity, pedestrian connectivity to the riverfront and Riverwalk, and I think we have to be careful there. We want to keep that celebration, much like that Hardman Road study has done, and we want to have other opportunities for pedestrian circulation through those buildings and adjacent to those buildings. Roundabouts, just real quickly, so the one roundabout that the master plan talks about is at the corner of, or sort of that terminus of First and, First and Third, and no, First and Front and Harrison and, you know, there's, we don't know what that looks like. The master plan or the guidelines has some examples of what that could look like. Another area that I really think we should address from a circulation standpoint is La Plazence, La Plazence and Sixth and Smith or Scott?
Scott.
Scott and all, it's just five different roads coming into one. It could be a smaller roundabout, but I think certainly something that can be, provide a little bit more safety and clarity to some of those areas. And there are other areas we talk about, neighborhoods, you know, could even have smaller ones so that, you know, we can try to, certainly in the school that's on Fifth, is that a middle school? Yeah, on Fifth Street. We just need to be careful where those are and make sure that they do what they're intended to do, provide circulation, but provide safety as well. Anything else? It's past nine o'clock, so y'all should be awake by now. Well, thank you all for coming. I really appreciate it and thanks to Annette and the team and Loretta for this opportunity. We look forward to hopefully implementing some of these in the future and really bringing a project forward as a test case. You know, we've talked a little bit about how we do that and I think it's, it's something that we can, we can build on and test without, you know, physically ripping streets up and what have you. There's other ways to do it. What do we call that?
Tactical urbanism.
Tactical urbanism. And basically what that is, is setting up that plan, just as you see in that slide, and, you know, bringing in material that would, are, you know, mindful of the guidelines and let people test them. Do you like them, do you not? And it's almost like a hands-on survey, if you will.
Prototype.
Prototype specifically, yes. But thanks again and thanks for coming and we'll see you again, I hope. Thank you.